Okay, the time is now seven o'clock and I'll call this meeting to order. Mr. Gibbs, will you please read the statement of compliance?
In compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Public Law 1975, Chapter 231. Notice of this meeting has been properly advertised in the Daily Record and Suburban Trends. Its agenda has been posted at the appropriate locations and a copy has been filed with Paquonic Township Clerk.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Cerisi?
Here.
Mrs. Esposito?
Here.
Mr. Gitten?
Here.
Mrs. Ikaio?
Here.
Mr. McSweeney?
Here.
Mr. Pompeo is absent. Mr. Senic?
Here.
And Mrs. Shannon?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Everyone, please stand for the flag salute. Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our January 21 regular business meeting. Before we begin, I want to announce that Mr. Blumer is going to be joining us remotely and taking on the form of Max Headroom from the eighties. And he's on the screen right over here. Tonight is a special night for two reasons. First, we will honor our recipients of the Teacher of the Year and Education Support Professional of the Year Awards from each school. The board congratulate you on this well-deserved honor. And we want you to know that you were appreciated for everything that you do for our districts, for our district, and for the students of Paquonic. Thank you and well done. Second, tonight, the board will vote on a new contract for Dr. Portis, which will keep him in Paquonic, where he belongs, through the end of 2029 school year. Dr. Portis took over as our superintendent in 2019 and is currently in his fifth year. At the end of this new contract, he will be in his ninth year. Dr. Portis is a tireless worker who led our district through the pandemic and out to the other side. We are seeing growth in our district, our administrative team, and our students. He's a strong leader who inspires our district and community with the genuine enthusiasm for Paquonic and as an example of integrity, trustworthiness, and professionalism. Thank you, Dr. Portis, and keep up the good work. And additionally, I want to make a change to the agenda. I'd like to move PMC 138-25 up to this point now, along with the associated public hearing. So before I open the public hearing and make a motion for that, I'd like to give the board an opportunity to speak on this contract. And I'm going to start with Ms. Shannon.
Um, I have no prepared remarks. I feel very unprepared, but Dr. Portis, I'm so excited. So that is, that is my remark. I'm so, so very excited to be able to vote on this tonight. And to keep you in the district for a little bit longer. So hopefully forever until you retire. But yes, thank you.
Uh, yeah, so, um, yeah, excited, excited as well. I mean, you know, Dr. Porter's time here, when he was Mr. Porter, when he started, but now he's Dr. Portis. You know, he's definitely brought a lot of stability to the district. Stability from the top down through our administration, our staff, our students, and to the community. And that, that's something that's very much valued. Any organization needs stability. And Mike has definitely brought that here. I think his transparency with the community is fantastic. His communication is fantastic. It's sometimes very long, but it's, it's fantastic. And I don't know what, I don't know what else to say. I mean, I know that, you know, working with the board and Mike is very professional. We've had our disagreements, which is, I think, important to have. It's good, it's good. It brings, it brings different viewpoints to light. It helps make the board better. It helps make the district better. And I'm just very happy we're able to do this for Dr. Portis and keep him here again for a few more years.
So, um, congratulations and very, very well deserved. We are super excited to have you, hopefully, until you retire. You know, I, I think that throughout the last couple of years, there's been a lot of movement forward and really accelerating the district, and we see that daily. You very much respect your colleagues and your, your staff. And most importantly, you always make sure that our students get the best that they need. So very much appreciated.
I just also want to thank President Senic and the committee on their negotiations for the contract. Appreciate you guys and your hard work on that. It's been a pleasure over the past year or so, watching you guys as a board. You guys do amazing work, and especially Dr. Portis. I recently attended a new board member training and got to go with him. So we got to continue our conversations about commitment to education, and I'm just really excited to be working with him. Thank you.
I just want to thank you for your many years of service, Mr. Porter, or Dr. Portis, and look forward to another, at least four or five years of service from you. Thank you.
So thanks, Brian, for putting us on the spot. You know how I love to not be prepared. So one thing about Mike, I mean, Dr. Portis, is that he has now spent as much time as superintendent as the first five superintendents I had to be on the board with. So that kind of says it all, but I'm not going to stop there. The one thing I really appreciate about Dr. Portis is that, and somebody else said it, is that we, we don't always get along. I think a lot of people out there think that, like, we're a bunch of just nodding, bobbing heads to each other. And it couldn't be more not true. And Dr. Portis has done an amazing job of listening to all the different opinions and then making decisions based on that. It's well, very well deserved. I'm very happy for him and congratulations.
Mr. Blumer?
Yeah, so again, I apologize that I couldn't be there today. And aside from the PTSD of having a board meeting virtually, like it was 2020, it is an exciting time to actually be attending virtually, just because I, I was able to somehow. I'm happy about that because this is a very important vote. Back in 2019, we spent a long time, hours, summer hours, interviewing for that next superintendent of Paquonic. And for those of our guests in the audience today, if you, you know, if you were, if you had children in the system from, you know, to Mr. Cerisi's point, from six years ago to, I don't know, let's call it 12 years ago. Paquonic was a revolving door. And that board at the time, in 2019, as we were interviewing some very sharp candidates, you know, the one goal that I know I had was to find someone who wanted to be here, who will be here, who will retire here, and will bring the stability that the district has needed for a very, very long time. So it was, it was an honor to be here when Dr. Portis started. It was one of my best board memories of calling him when he was with his family at Hershey Park to tell him that he was becoming the new superintendent of Paquonic Township. And I'm just excited here that I'm now here to vote for his third contract with the, with our district. So thank you.
Right. With that, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ball in favor? Opposed? All right. Anyone that would wish to speak on the, the contract for Dr. Portis can please come up to the microphone and state your name and sign in before you begin speaking.
All right, Dave Cole, Paquonic resident. In seven days, I'll be a Paquonic resident for 60 years. I'm here to just support the contract for Dr. Portis. The leadership and the stability that you've brought to Paquonic is greatly appreciated. The, the, the whole board, you, you're doing a great job, but it begins with the leadership, I think, of Dr. Portis. So I'm fully supporting the, the extension and the contract for Dr. Portis. Congratulations, and I hope you are here until you retire. I have no skin in the game. I graduated in 1983 from Quanahay School. My boys graduated in 2011. I don't have any children or grandchildren in the school district. I'm a taxpayer. I think you guys are doing a great job, and it all begins with Dr. Portis. So thank you.
Hi, Rich Hazler, Principal of PTHS, but also Vice President of the PTPSA. And I'm also a resident, so I got three criteria, I guess. But I just wanted to take this opportunity to, to thank the board for recognizing the leadership of Dr. Portis. And when you think about leadership, I think of passion, I think of perseverance, I think of relationships. And, you know, from the community here today, from the leadership team, the collegiality that we have, being here 24 years, it's never been stronger. You know, you, you get up, you enjoy coming to work every day. His vision, his sense of purpose, his sense of pride for the community, the passion and love he has for the kids and for the staff is second to none. So thank you, Dr. Portis, for all that you do. Thank you to the board for your vision and for believing in all of us to do what's best for kids. And we appreciate Dr. Portis in continuing our pursuit of excellence in, in the district. So thank you very much.
I'm not as eloquent as Richard. Mike, I just want to say congratulations to the board. You guys are making a wonderful decision. Having worked in multiple districts under many superintendents, I can say that there's never been someone who has been so caring about his staff, his teachers, his, just from the teachers to the administration, to the custodians. Mike is, uh, Mike is A1. And congratulations, Mike. And Rich, I thought you had something really funny to say about hiring Mike. What happened? It was definitely, Rich had a joke, and then he, and then he bailed on it.
I actually hired Mike when I was Assistant Principal here. We interviewed and Dr. Portis's name came across the desk as an English teacher. And here I am now, he's my boss. So it's amazing how things work out, and I am super happy for that. So thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Anne Marie Finnan. I'm an elementary music teacher in Paquonic. I live in Paquonic. And I'm the president of the Paquonic Township Education Association. And in that role, I would, first of all, like to thank the Board of Education for offering Dr. Portis a contract extension. I appreciate how much you care about the stability of leadership in this district. It is truly important. I've been in the district for 30 years, and I just double-checked with my, my colleague and friend. And I have never had a superintendent as long as I've had Dr. Portis as my superintendent. And it definitely means a lot that you care about that, and I thank you all. Ms. Ikaio, Ikaio. I have not had a chance to welcome you. Ikaio, so sorry. Welcome and thank you for being willing to serve on, on the Board of Ed. Dr. Portis, congratulations. Thank you for always listening to me as I speak on behalf of my 285 members. I greatly appreciate that, and I wish you a lot of luck. I'm looking forward to continuing to working with you.
Okay, seeing no one else coming up, I'll close public comment. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, at this time, we're going to ask Ms. Shannon to move the item for PMC, PMC 138-25.
I would like to move PMC 138-25.
Second. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call a roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Uh, very proudly, yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Ikaio?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo is absent. Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senic?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Dr. Portis, congratulations. And now I'm literally going to sign his contract and hand it to him. Okay, with that, that takes care of my president's report, and now I'm going to kick it over to the man of the hour, Dr. Portis, for your report.
Thank you, Mr. Senic. Obviously, very tough to follow. We're here for, to recognize our Educators of the Year, and that's where our focus is really going to be. I just want to express my incredible gratitude, not just to the board, but also to the whole community. I came here, as, as Mr. Hazler mentioned, at a, at a point in my career when I was pretty close to burning out, back in 2007. And one of the interviewers was a young administrator who brought incredible energy and passion and conviction. And it really helped to get me excited. And I have to say, like, my whole time here, whether it was as an English teacher, my time as a Hillview principal, or in this role now, it's, it's been so incredibly fulfilling. It's because of the people who surround us here. You, you know it, but you have such a wonderful community. And I'm, I'm so appreciative that you've taken me in. I realize I'm somewhat of an outsider, but I kind of feel like a, a Paquonic person because of just the interaction. So I had a loss for words, which I knew was bound to happen eventually in my life. But I just want to express my, my sincere gratitude, and I'm looking forward to another four-plus years. And I could be looking at retirement too, but there's no way I'm doing that. So let's keep the, let's keep the great, great momentum going. And again, I really appreciate it. And with that, I'm going to send it over to our student representatives for their report, and then we'll, we'll jump into the, the Governor's Educator of the Year recognitions. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I hope you guys are doing well. Since this is our first meeting back in the new year, we hope everyone's 2025 is off to a great start. Welcome to the board, Mrs. Ikaio. I hope I said that right. And we look forward to working with you. Congratulations to all the districts' Teacher of the Year and Educational Support Professionals. Thank you for all you do for the students in our schools. The Winter Cabaret was performed prior to the last meeting in the cafeteria. Various music performances and ensembles showcased their talents. A great job was done by everyone. A PTHS basketball program held its annual Blue and Gold Tournament over the winter break. Congratulations to Ali Guardino and Dylan Tomoskovic for being named the All-Tournament Teams. Congratulations to the Gold Party, who just won the AP Government President of Paquonic election just before the break. The debate was held in front of the entire school with voting taking place before the debate. Both parties will be working with the administration to move some of their platforms forward.
The administration met with the student body last Wednesday to discuss upcoming scheduling process for the 2025-2026 school year. In preparation for students choosing electives for next year, the high school hosted the Fifth Annual AP Elective Fair during unit lunch in the main gym on Friday, January 10. Students have been selecting electives this week. Interviews for the STEM Aviation and Full-Time Allied Health Programs are finishing up at PV and in Lincoln Park. Letters will be mailed out to the accepted students on Wednesday. The PTHS School Counseling Department has hosted two programs for parents over the last two weeks. The admissions officers from several colleges spoke on the college admissions process. There also was a Parents University on the scheduling process this past Wednesday for parents in grades 11 to 8th grade. At PTHS, the PTHS counselors will be visiting PV next week's to review the electives. PTHS presented the winter musical Dracula on Thursday, January 16 through the 18. The students did a fantastic job. Additionally, the Allied Health seniors were certified in mental health first aid, as well as receiving narcin training, where they went through a series of certification presentations to better help in real-life emergency scenarios. Congratulations to Henry Struble for being recognized as a Steve DeGregorio Young Man of the Year for the Super Bowl, uh, for the Super Football Conference. Henry was recognized at MetLife Stadium, where he was awarded five, a $5,000 scholarship and two tickets to the Super Bowl, among other prizes. Congratulations to Zoe Wizner, Caitlin Ziegler, and Emily Ziegler, who were all honored at the Soccer State Luncheon by the NJGSCA this past Sunday. The NJGSCA recognized top players in the state. Zoe, Caitlin, and Emily were recognized as the top girls soccer players for Paquonic in Section 1 North One. This Thursday, there will be a spring sports interest meetings for the upcoming spring seasons for the high school athletes. Last week, swim and wrestling had their senior nights to recognize the seniors in all their hard work. This week, the girls' basketball will be having their senior night on Friday. Congratulations to all the senior athletes for their hard work and dedication. On February 7, the junior class will be holding the first-ever junior formal at the barnyard. It will be a great night of fun and socializing with music and a buffet. The junior class officers have been working hard to make this night one to remember. Thank you for your time and have a great night.
Thank you, girls, and well done. With that, we're going to move to the Governor's Educator of the Year recognition. I know we have a sequence for the principals to present, but I believe since he's standing up, Mr. Reiner will be first. But Dr. Portis, if I can just close out real quick, I do have to sign off because I'm at a work function. But I just wanted to congratulate the teachers and support staff of the year. Especially support staff of the year. That holds a close place in my heart. Yesterday was the four-year, four-year anniversary of my mom passing, and I often reflect on her career. She was a school aide for 29 years, and that defies the odds of the school aide position nowadays, as anybody can, uh, that works at a school can, can tell. So I just want to, again, congratulate you guys. Thank you for everything you guys do, and it's never unnoticed. And enjoy your day. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thanks, Joe.
Good evening again. It is an honor to be here to celebrate our educational support professionals and our educators of the year. For S J G, we'll start with our educational support professional of the year, Mrs. Elizabeth Helmrich. She attended Loyola Maryland for her undergrad and Northeastern University for her grad work. She has been a speech-language pathologist since 2005. Mrs. Helmrich has worked in early intervention in both Massachusetts and Westchester County, including the preschool for, for Ark of Westchester for 12 years prior to coming to Paquonic. Working with children as a speech-language pathologist is a, is a labor of love for Mrs. Helmrich. It started when she was little, and both of her brothers received speech services. She loved acting as their interpreter. Her major inspiration, however, was her mother. Her mom was a special education teacher in the Bronx and opened her eyes to the impact that you can have when working with, with, working with children. Mrs. Helmrich has worked at Paquonic for four years, and we are very lucky that she came to us. She has fit right in at S J G, as she is the utmost professional, is a wonderful colleague, and demonstrates a high level of caring for our students each and every day. I asked her what makes her so passionate about her profession, and she said, "I love coming to work because of the kids. Every day is different, and I am constantly learning." The many recommendations that Mrs. Helmrich received painted a picture of someone who indeed loves her job. A quote that really stood out was, "Mrs. Helmrich's diligence in evaluating students who may need speech or language services is commendable. She is truly here for what is best for our kids." As part of doing what is best for our students, Mrs. Helmrich is also a valuable member of our IRS team, which bring, where she brings data and ideas to the table to best support our needing students. Another quote is, "Mrs. Helmrich communicates with fellow teachers as well as parents to meet the needs of students. She creates an environment that is warm and welcoming for all. It is her positivity and warmth that makes students comfortable going to a service when oftentimes students might be hesitant to leave their classroom. Mrs. Helmrich has created a vibrant learning environment out of a small, very small instructional space that didn't used to be such. You can always see her students collaborating, and in the classroom, they're all laughing together, enjoying what they are learning. In her time away from school, Mrs. Helmrich enjoys spending time with her husband, John, and her two boys, Brendan and Sean. Often at the end of the day, I ask her if she has any big plans for the night, and she says with a big smile on her face, "I get to go home and I get to be mom." She also loves to go out to eat at different restaurants and to vacation down the shore and at Disney, which is also one of my favorites. Beth, we are very lucky you have found your way to S J G. We truly appreciate all that you do for our students and our school community. You are very deserving of the S J G Educational Services Professional of the Year Award. Congratulations, Mrs. Beth Helmrich. Onto the Teacher of the Year. Our Educator of the Year at S J G is Mrs. Jacqueline Stringer. Mrs. Stringer went to Rowan University to receive a Bachelor's in Education in 1992. She then obtained her Special Education Certificate from William Patterson University in 2012. She is currently in her 11th year in Paquonic, ten of them at S J G, and her 13th year in education, having spent some time in Riverdale and as a district sub. She has taught kindergarten and loves, and I mean loves, kindergarten. Mrs. Stringer has always wanted to be a teacher because she and her brother grew up at a camp for children with diabetes where their mom was the head nurse. Once they were young adults, they worked as counselors there too. Mrs. Stringer knew from a young age that she wanted to work with children. Although she had another career prior to being a teacher, she continued to feel the pull to be an educator. After graduating Rowan, it was a very challenging time to get a teaching position, so she went a different route and worked at State Farm Insurance. She was there for seven years as an underwriter before the birth of her second child. Her family continued growing, and after three children, she remained home for six years. Knowing that she wanted to go back into education, she went back to school to obtain her special education degree. The following are qualities that were common in, that were a common theme in her recommendations that were received for Teacher of the Year. They were received from both colleagues and parents: patient, knowledgeable, hardworking, collaborative, loving, and helpful. These are all qualities that make educators great, with the quality of patience being very important when teaching five-year-olds. When reviewing the letters received from Mrs. Stringer, the following quote stood out. From a colleague, the quote was, "Mrs. Stringer is always willing to help. For example, the Grade Five Creativity Club was in need of an advisor. Although this was unfamiliar territory for her, she took on the role so that the club would be held and the students would not be disappointed. She did a fantastic job." From a parent, "Not only was Mrs. Stringer an incredible teacher for my son, but she was an amazing support during an unprecedented time in our lives. She would not only check on her student, but would call to check on my older son as well as myself." I think both of these quotes demonstrate a lot about Mrs. Stringer's character. "When walking down the hallway, you can always hear a fun song or a lot of learning noise coming from Room 102. Mrs. Stringer's classroom is set up so students can collaborate, which is an important part of learning. Her kindergarten students are not only learning their ABCs and 1-2-3s, but she is also guiding them on their journey of learning how to play with others and be social. Mrs. Stringer ensures that her students' interactions are based in kindness and empathy when needed. Her passion for teaching comes from helping children learn, grow, and overcome challenges. She loves those aha moments when she sees a student learn how to read or solve a math problem. When not at school, Mrs. Stringer enjoys spending time with her three adult children, who all went through the Paquonic school system, including S J G. She enjoys staying active through bike riding, walking, and hiking. In the summer, she spends a lot of time at Bradley Beach, where she shares a beach house with her family. Mrs. Stringer likes to volunteer when she can and will be chaperoning a person with special needs at the Night to Shine Event at the Jackson Chapel on February 7. This prom event is a very special event, and it's her third year attending it. She is super proud to do so. Jackie, you're a wonderful teacher and colleague. You're someone who is making those aha moments happen for our students daily. You are extremely deserving of the S J G Teacher of the Year Award. Congratulations, Mrs. Stringer." Congratulations, Mrs. Stringer. All right, Dr. Shalera, North Boulevard.
Good evening. I am beyond excited to take this moment to congratulate Mrs. Melissa Barkatapone on being recognized as North Boulevard's Education Support Professional of the Year. Melissa is a truly remarkable individual whose passion for helping students grow has made a lasting impact on our school community. Melissa's journey with us began at Hillview where she started part-time in the MLSP position. I was fortunate enough to work alongside her for several years during that time at Hillview. We had some fun times there that we still reminisce about, and I saw firsthand her dedication and her ability to connect with students in ways that made a difference. After teaching fifth grade at Hillview, Melissa joined us here at North Boulevard where she taught both fourth and fifth grades before becoming our reading specialist 11 years ago. In her role as reading specialist, Melissa brings an immense wealth of knowledge and expertise in literacy development. She has an ability to recognize the individual needs of struggling readers and a deep understanding of how to help them make progress. Her approach is both thoughtful and effective, always pushing her students to reach their full potential while ensuring that they have the support they need to succeed. More than just a teacher, Melissa builds strong trusting relationships with her students, making them feel comfortable taking risks and challenging themselves and knowing that they have her unwavering support. Beyond her direct work with students, Melissa's leadership is evident in everything she does. She's a valuable resource for her colleagues, offering instructional advice, sharing strategies and even differentiating reading homework to further support her students' growth. Her collaboration with teachers is not only helpful, but essential to the success of our school's literacy program. Melissa also took the lead in getting Wilson certified several years ago, a program that has benefited many of our dyslexic students and others with reading challenges. Her commitment to improving her craft and providing the best support possible to her students, families and colleagues, colleagues is unmatched. Melissa, we are incredibly lucky to have you here at North Boulevard. Your dedication, expertise and care make a difference every single day, and this recognition is just a small token of the impact you've had on everyone. Congratulations on being named our Education Support Professional of the Year. We are so grateful for everything you do. Next, I'm honored to congratulate Mrs. Shannon Feltz for being named the Governor's Teacher of the Year for North Boulevard. Shannon has made an undeniable impact at North Boulevard, starting her journey as a classroom aide in a preschool setting before transitioning to her current role as preschool teacher in that same classroom, um, in 2018. Since then, she has worked closely with every student, creating an environment where learning thrives. Shannon's dedication to her students in the preschool program is evident in every aspect of her work. She's always willing to collaborate with her colleagues, listening to ideas and offering suggestions to ensure the program continuously improves. Her leadership skills shine, shine through in the way she has helped reorganize the preschool schedule, ensuring more, more time is for focused learning. Her commitment to professional growth has also been obvious as she has earned the highest endorsement in Tools of the Mind, demonstrating her passion for the craft of preschool teaching. But what truly sets Shannon apart is the warmth and positivity she brings to the entire school community. Whether it's through her work with the Sunshine Club or organizing one of her many after-school clubs, she goes above and beyond for her colleagues and students. One project that stands out is her effort to revitalize the school's rock garden this summer. Shannon rallied both staff and parents to bring new life to the garden, creating a space that will benefit the entire school for years to come. When asked her favorite part of the job, she shared that it is watching the, the social, emotional and academic growth of her students as they progress throughout the year. Shannon, your creativity, dedication and care make a world of difference to the students and families you serve. We are incredibly fortunate to have you as a teacher, and this recognition is a true reflection of the positive impact you have made. Congratulations and thank you for everything you do for us. Now I pass this along to my colleague, Mrs. Stager.
Good evening. I'm very excited, um, for both of Hillview's recipients this year. I'll start with our educational support professional. Uh, it's an honor to recognize Mrs. Danielle Chicalione as Hillview's Educational Support Professional of the Year. Mrs. Chicalione serves as our school nurse where she has made tremendous impact within the school community. Danielle joined us in October of 2022 and we immediately felt her presence in the building. She's a nurse who truly cares and not just for the students. Being a school nurse requires establishing positive and trusting relationships with students, parents and staff members. Mrs. C, as we call her because her last name is just too long with too many vowels to say, is someone who has strengthened the culture within the school. We did not know what we were missing until she arrived. Danielle has had a long career in nursing, however, not all her years have been spent in a school setting. After receiving her BSN from Seton Hall and a master's in school health from Jersey City University, she spent nearly two decades in reproductive endocrinology. She always enjoyed teaching within the field of nursing and taught many different classes relating to childbirth and childcare. As time went on, Danielle transitioned to school health and was a high, high, high school nurse in the Caldwell, West Caldwell School District before coming to Paquonic. She had expressed interest in transferring to an elementary setting, and thankfully for us, her former district did not honor her request and their loss became a huge gain for us. Danielle resides in West Caldwell with her husband and has raised three fantastic children who have all graduated from college and are gainfully employed. So way to go Danielle. Danielle is very family oriented and enjoys spending time with both her immediate and larger extended family. When she's not taking care of others, she enjoys traveling, going to farmers markets, gardening, puzzles, crafts and hiking. In a small school like Hillview, the school nurse is a pivotal position that requires leadership, endless patience and a positive bedside manner. Danielle and I work very closely together and she embodies all of those characteristics as well as many others that make her perfect for the job. Danielle just innately knows how to navigate every situation she faces, maintains composure and makes thoughtful decisions in the best interests of the students. And it's not just students she sees in her office. Staff members are constantly stopping by for advice, a Band-Aid or just a smile and pleasant conversation. When asked what she loves about being a school nurse, she said, in the school setting, the patient is not only the student, it's the whole family. I am especially interested in developing trust and building positive relationships while collaborating with parents and other school professionals to, to promote success for our students. That statement is truly the key to school nursing. It's all about relationships. Another great attribute Danielle possesses is her ability to be seen. As the school nurse, you are pretty much chained to your office. However, whenever she can, she's in the cafeteria, on the playground and in the classroom, checking in on students or teaching healthy habits. Additionally, she is tight with the staff and has formed strong bonds with her colleagues. Danielle's proactive nature leads to high levels of productivity. She is diligent in record-keeping and has refined and improved many systems in place at Hillview and in the district. She keeps in close contact with her colleagues and makes sure she is up to date with her practices. She approaches every situation with heart and at the forefront of every decision is the students. Danielle sets a positive example for all those around her and has really emerged as a leader in Hillview in a short amount of time. During her last observation, I told her to try and stop being so perfect so that there could be an area for improvement. But Danielle is always looking for ways to improve and better herself and does so without being told or asked. Danielle, it's truly a pleasure to work and know you. You are deeply appreciated. Hats off to a job well done and once again, congratulations on being recognized as our educational educator, support service professional, whatever it is of the year. Thank you. Too many acronyms. And now on to our educator of the year. It's a pleasure to honor Mrs. Sarah Callahan as Hillview's Educator of the Year. Having grown up in town, attending SJG and graduating from PTHS, it's fair to say Mrs. Callahan is about as devoted to Paquonic Township as they come. Sarah has the unique ability to find the good in any student or situation, which is key to her success as a teacher. Sarah grew up always wanting to be a teacher. She attended Towson University for her undergraduate degree and is currently finishing her master's at TCNJ. It was a dream come true when Sarah was hired in SJG in 2011. But things became even better when after two years of teaching, she was transferred to Hillview. Since joining Hillview, she has taught fourth and fifth grade. Sarah embraces living in the community she serves with her husband and two young daughters. She has a large extended family that she spends a lot of time with, and when time allows, she enjoys running and getting to the beach as much as possible. Sarah is a lot of fun, has a great personality and likes to laugh. That positivity radiates within her classroom and relationships she has formed with students, families and colleagues. In a well-rounded elementary school, there are teachers with different personalities and teaching styles. There are times when you think a particular student is better matched with one teacher over another. However, that is not the case with Mrs. Callahan. What sets her apart from colleagues is that she can connect with every single student and find ways to motivate them. The high achieving student, anxious student, the reluctant student, really any type of student. She is able to create an inclusive environment where everyone feels welcome and thrives. Sarah regularly performs thoughtful gestures that no one knows about, such as giving a student in need clothing or a goodbye gift when a student moved. When asked what she loves about teaching, Sarah said, I love that feeling when a student has an aha moment. It makes everything worth it. She loves being able to continue seeing her students around town as they grow up and gets to chat with them about their lives and futures. I have now worked with Sarah for five years and during that time I have seen her confidence grow and she's really kind of made that shift into becoming a seasoned teacher and recognizing that she has a lot of knowledge and is able to take charge. From my standpoint, that's been really rewarding to observe because a principal is nothing without teachers. And when teachers become teacher leaders, the school as a whole is much more successful. Sarah is currently teaching fifth grade, which is demanding and busy. In addition to preparing students for middle school with an overwhelming focus on academics, there are so many other things going on. It's a year filled with culminating activities and Mrs. Callahan puts in a lot of extra time to make sure these experiences are special for the students. She also enjoys the experiences herself and when students see their teacher having fun, they know it's genuine. In addition to the work she puts in the classroom, Mrs. Callahan has helped transform the building Sunshine Club. From showers to holiday parties and birthdays, Sarah knows those personal little touches go a long way in maintaining a positive culture in the building and strengthening relationships between coworkers. It's yet another example of Sarah giving herself and her time for the greater good of the community. Sarah, on behalf of the entire Hillview team that you work so hard to support, we are so proud of you and congratulate you on being selected as our educator of the year. She also has the biggest fan club. All right, I'm gonna pass this on to Mr. Sabarowski, Principal of PV.
Good evening, everyone, and I would like to thank Dr. Portis and the Board of Education for recognizing all of our recipients this evening and congratulations to all who are being honored. Paquonic Valley Schools Educational Support Professional of the Year is Mrs. Claudia Diaz. Claudia is a Paquonic resident, which makes this recognition even more special. She has worked at PV for eight years now, starting as a lunch aide in her first year and then as an instructional aide for the last seven. She provides academic support to both students and teachers in the classroom and also provides monitoring assistance in the cafeteria. And anyone who has spent time in a middle school cafeteria knows how much recognition she truly deserves for that one item alone. When asked what she likes most about working with students, she said she really enjoys helping get students acclimated to the building, especially sixth graders just entering middle school. She enjoys building a rapport with the students and working with them to know that they always have someone to come to if they are ever in need of help. Claudia has served as a familiar face to many of our students across all three grade levels at PV. And whether it's in the classroom, hallway or cafeteria, students know Mrs. Diaz as a kind and caring individual who will do anything she can to help them be successful at PV. When I asked her what she likes most about working in the Paquonic Township School District, Claudia said, it really is a great environment to work in. The students and staff are so nice and always help each other. She really likes the quick commute she has here in town as well. Throughout the nomination process, her colleagues shared the following about Claudia. She works hard to ensure that students are given every chance to succeed. Her steadfast, quiet, calm demeanor is a reassuring presence in the classroom. She never loses patience and never loses sight of the potential of a student. Claudia is married and has two daughters who both went through the Paquonic Township School District. When they were both younger, she volunteered at the elementary level and public library, but as they got older, she knew she wanted to be more involved in the school community, so she joined PV. When not in school, Claudia enjoys spending time with and taking care of her family, reading and going to the beach. When she is in school, everyone knows they can always count on her for any assistance necessary to help a student reach their goals. We are all fortunate to call Claudia our colleague and I once again congratulate her on being named PV's Educational Support Professional of the Year. I am pleased to recognize Mrs. Candace McCaffrey as Paquonic Valley Schools Educator of the Year. This is Candace's 16th year in education with 13 of them here in Paquonic as an English teacher at PV. Candace is a calm and reassuring presence in the building to her students and colleagues. You will not find a harder working teacher than Mrs. McCaffrey and we are fortunate to have her as part of our staff. What many people might not know about Candace is that she actually spent the first year and a half of college studying criminal justice. She wanted to study something though that was a little bit more interesting, so she decided to pursue her love of reading. She had many fond memories of her mother taking her to the library when she was a child, so she knew that she wanted to do something with reading. And what better way to do that than to work daily with students and instill in them an interest in reading and writing? Candace is the consummate professional and the picture of someone who leads by example. She works hard in the classroom each day, creating lessons designed at improving her students' reading, writing and speaking skills. She spends countless hours reading her students' writing while always providing feedback so they can continue to evolve as thinkers and writers. And as a former high school English teacher myself, I understand just how much time she spends doing that. She has worked closely with her colleagues and department supervisors in recent years on promoting student choice reading units in her classes and building a classroom library. Although this was a new initiative a couple of years ago, Candace recognized its importance and believed that this would benefit her students. She took on the responsibilities and has never looked back. Her students are the beneficiaries of this work on her part and she deserves to be recognized for that. When asked what she enjoys most about teaching English, she said that when she plans and is in the process of completing a lesson with her classes, she really enjoys when a student provides her with an idea that she didn't think of and how the student's way of thinking promotes more discussion among their peers. As we talk more specifically about Paquonic, Candace said, I enjoy working in Paquonic because I really like the people, the colleagues and students. It's good to feel supported and I have developed nice relationships with people over the years. The process of selecting the educator of the year always begins with nominations and I'd like to share a couple of thoughts from Candace's colleagues. She approaches every challenge with a quiet confidence and determination, always striving to provide her students with meaningful and attainable experiences. Mrs. McCaffrey embraces the ever-changing landscape of education, regularly implementing new technology and teaching strategies to create optimal learning experiences for her students. Anytime there is a challenge or someone is in need, Mrs. McCaffrey is one of the first to step up and lend a helping hand. Her positive attitude inspires everyone around her to do their best. I myself have been fortunate to work with Candace for the last 11 years and I wholeheartedly agree with those sentiments. In addition to her dedication to PV, Candace loves spending time outdoors with her husband and two children, specifically visiting and staying at her sister's farm in New Hampshire during the summer. And of course, when I hear avid reader, spending time on a farm in New Hampshire, I think of Robert Frost, so perhaps one of these summers Candace will return to Paquonic having written the next great piece of American poetry. And if not, the students and staff of PV know how very lucky we are to have her here with us each day. And it is for all of these reasons, I once again congratulate Mrs. Candace McCaffrey on being named PV's Teacher of the Year. And now Mr. Hazler.
Once again, good evening, everyone. Congratulations to all the recipients. It is with Golden Panther pride that I recognize Ms. Kristen O'Connor as this year's Educational Support Professional of the Year for Paquonic Township High School. Ms. O'Connor is in her second year as a school counselor here at PTHS. She received- She received her undergraduate degree from Montclair State University with a degree in Family Science and Human Development and then went on for her master's degree in school counseling from Monmouth University. Ms. O'Connor joined PTHS as a maternity leave replacement. We were in desperate need in our guidance department at the end of the 2022-2023 school year and she just did a fantastic job. She was able to join us full-time on staff last year during the 2023-2024 school year. As many of you know, over the past two years, our school counseling department has undergone a major transition as we have added all new members to the department with varying degrees of experience. Ms. O'Connor's outgoing personality, energetic smile and passion to see her students succeed inside and outside the classroom has contributed to a team that is growing stronger and stronger every day. Whenever you walk into the guidance office, you will find Ms. O'Connor working with a student, on the phone with a parent, collaborating with a colleague, working on a college application process or reviewing grade reports. In the hallway, she's meeting with students, popping into classrooms. And Ms. O'Connor has been heavily involved in organizing our immediate decision days for seniors, field trips for students interested in vocational schools after high school and facilitating the many parent universities we have. She's the co-advisor for our peer leader program where this year she has worked with a colleague to revamp the responsibilities of our peer leaders. When I asked Ms. O'Connor what she enjoys about working at PTHS, she quickly jumped to respond. She enjoys the opportunity to build relationships with the students and parents. She describes her day as unpredictable in the very best way possible. Being available for students who need support, working with colleagues on strategies that would work best in the classroom or being a listening ear for a parent who needs someone to talk to are all things that make her day rewarding. She is incredibly grateful for the support of her colleagues and describes the camaraderie between the staff and administration as something that's really special. Her colleagues describe her as a role model for students, catering to their social, emotional and academic needs with kindness, creativity and compassion. She is so easy to work with to create a positive working environment that fosters growth. She makes school a safe place for her students to learn and works tirelessly to ensure that she is communicating with the students and parents to work toward whatever the students' goals may be. With kindness, creativity and compassion as the foundation of Ms. O'Connor's early beginnings of her career, she is well on her way to creating positive change for our current and future Golden Panthers and their families. I'm looking forward to see what is to come for Ms. O'Connor, but also for the students and parents she works with as she helps PTHS forward into the future. Congratulations, Ms. Kristen O'Connor, PTHS's Educational Services Professional of the Year. Last but not least, it is an honor and privilege to present this year's PTHS Governor's Educator of the Year, one of PTHS's chemistry teachers, Mr. Dan Sutherland. I was gonna start off his introduction by telling a chemistry joke, but I don't think I would get a reaction. All right, so all right, we got, we got it. See what I did there? To be honest, if you had told me four years ago that I would be standing here tonight introducing Mr. Sutherland as our educator of the year, you could have knocked me over with a feather, not because he's not deserving of the recognition, but because I would not have believed Paquonic would be lucky to have him on our teaching staff. You see, I've known Mr. Sutherland for years in his role as Director of Curriculum and Instruction in a previous district. Mr. Sutherland had presented at several of our tech summits on how to use technology effectively in the classroom and other effective best practice teaching strategies. His workshops were always well attended and the work he was doing as an administrator in his district was always highly respected by his peers across the county and state. Aside from that, I knew him as a parent of two wonderful children that I've had the privilege of being their principal since middle school. When we were in need of a chemistry teacher a few years ago and Mr. Sutherland's resume came through, we had the chance to talk about why he wanted to return to teaching. His response was simple. I just want to be a part of this special community. If I'm going to return to teaching, it's not going to be just anywhere. Fortunately for us, that place is right here in the halls of PTHS. And for the past three years, Mr. Sutherland has been teaching chemistry at the academic honors and AP level in our science department. Mr. Sutherland's teaching career began in Midland Park in 1996 and has evolved to include experiences in educational technology, his role as a science supervisor and then roles as the Director of Curriculum Instruction for two different high performing districts. Through these experiences, he has gained the unique perspective of teaching and learning in schools. He's been able to use his experiences to create a chemistry classroom that comes to life each day with creativity, critical thinking, problem solving and maybe even a little fire. There are very few instances where you will find Mr. Sutherland with an empty classroom. Before school, during his help block at lunch or after school in a Panther period, students are engaged in conversation with each other, working on problems or sitting with Mr. Sutherland figuring out the why and what the lab experiment is all about. When asked what brings him joy, he simply said, whenever a student is in my classroom asking questions and willing to learn, that's what the job is all about. AP Chemistry made a return to our program of studies last year because of the excitement that Mr. Sutherland created. In our first year back, the students averaged a 3.93 on what is considered to be one of the hardest AP exams to take. Outperforming the state and national average by more than a half a point is a testament to the hard work of our students and most importantly to Mr. Sutherland who put in a tremendous amount of time. His colleagues comment that Mr. Sutherland's ability to create an inclusive learning environment and his consistent availability to students make him a cornerstone of our school community. His influence is evident in the success of his students and the deep connection he fosters with them. He is not only a teacher, but a mentor who empowers each student to reach their full potential. He truly cares about each and every student, encouraging them to follow their passion. He spends time helping students whenever they need it, which means more than I think he realizes. For me, room 407 is a stop I try to make at least a few times a week to see what chemicals are getting mixed or what might get set on fire, to listen to the academic conversations that are happening about chemistry or sometimes just to sit and chat about education with Mr. Sutherland. I am grateful that Mr. Sutherland came back to the classroom and his colleagues, students and this community are grateful too. And that's a chemical reaction to celebrate. This year's PTHS Educator of the Year, Mr. Dan Sutherland.
And first I just want to thank all the educators of the year for being here, not just tonight, but in general, obviously the fruits of your labors are evident and very much appreciated. Also thank you to the principals for your wonderful speeches tonight as well. And I will sheepishly admit that Mr. Hazler's joke was kind of funny. But that said, before we, before we clear the room, because usually when we wrap up with these, people don't want to stick around for the resolutions. But if we could just get a picture together with all the educators of the year, I think that'd be great. And if you have a child in tow who doesn't want to leave your arm, we can make that work. So come on up. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Why is it always I have like the boring jobs presenting before you? I promise I'm somewhat of an interesting guy, but on just a quick personal note, Dr. Portis, congratulations and just thank you for all you do and to the Board of Education. Thank you for offering this great manner, the opportunity to continue to lead us. So the SSDS, Student Safety Data System, kind of in my role as the Anti-Bullying Coordinator. What we do, if you're not familiar, every six months we collect data on a number of metrics that are related to not just bullying, but things that are related to this vandalism, weapons, violence, substance abuse, things like this. So you're gonna have to just bear with me. I have two laptops going, one with my notes and then the other one with the actual slides. So I think I've gotten this down pretty well. You're gonna see just a lot of numbers here tonight and what I'm gonna try to do is not just read numbers to you, but try to paint a little bit of qualitative data that goes with them. So what we're reporting on tonight is from January 1 to June 30th. So it's important to remember this is not the current school year, this is the last school year. So you can see these are our district totals, these are all of the metrics that this report covers. And if people have questions, please feel free to stop me. I'm happy to go back as well. As you can see, reporting by school, again, we're gonna delve into these both by building and by category in just a second. I'll just say kind of taking a 30,000-foot view snapshot from my standpoint and I, it actually was just a year for me, January 2nd in the district, but I want to look at the historical data and it does look like we're moving in a positive direction on most or all of these metrics. So first are just the HIV training and programs. A lot of this state terminology sometimes gets a little muddled in the actual day-to-day details. HIV training includes a lot of different things and it's not necessarily the same thing every year. This is district HIV policy with bullying prevention instruction and other training. This is, includes training that I attend as the ABC or our ABSs who are the people that actually do the bullying investigations. This is also the training that goes with the school climate, school climate teams as well. When we look at programs, that's just a little bit different. Those can include things like the council monthly newsletters, Blue and Gold Fridays, New Jersey Bar Association Bully-Busting Curriculum, Six Pillars of Good Character, Peer Leader Activities and Week of Respect Activities. So as I said, we'll be getting into these numbers a little bit more deeply, but just to give you an idea, that's what that terminology means. Total district incidents, just again, I'm doing two laptops here, I apologize. Total different district incidents, you can see it's, we are kind of on the down slope. You're gonna see a very similar shape to a lot of these graphs for the large reason we know what happened in 2020. But again, I think the positive picture is that we're at or better than where we were pre-pandemic. So just a little bit of qualitative information regarding incidents. When we do the state report, this does not include seclusion and restraint, that is a separate category that we have to report on. But all of these numbers, when I asked the principals and the ABSs to give me a little bit of background on this, the caring schools' community curriculum that's being done in the elementary schools made a repeat occurrence in the reasons why these incidents are going down. In addition, principals now have more discretion on determining whether to investigate an incident or not of HIV. And that's not to say that that's why we have fewer of them, but that is to say that we have a lot more kind of autonomy in doing other things not prescribed to us by the state that we consider to be best practice. When we look at acts of violence, just a quick note about PV, when we talk about violence in the middle school, that takes more on, takes place more in social media and verbally. I think the same thing probably could be said for all five of our buildings. So if people were asking me what's going on in 18 and 19 and what changed, I don't know exactly what I could tell you, but it's nice to see that that trend has gone down and it has continued to come down since the pandemic. A lot of what we attribute this to in the secondary level, that's grade six through 12, is the starting, the use of Smart Pass. This is something we started here at the high school last year, started this year at PV. If you don't know what Smart Pass is, it's something that allows us as administrators to see who's out in the hallways, who's at the nurse, who's at the bathroom, et cetera, et cetera. Just to be able to kind of monitor where students are, but also students know that they're being monitored and they have a certain amount of time to do what they need to do and come back. So that I think has been a plus in a number of ways, one of which is this. When we talk about substance abuse, I do have a quote from our SAC, Jim Bastelone, who I spoke with before or during the collection of this data before the presentation this evening. So just focusing on just our high schoolers for a moment, because you can see that's, that's really obviously where the numbers are. We're not seeing them in the first four columns. This year's sophomores class was a special cohort. I'm paraphrasing now what Ms. Bastelone and I discussed. When COVID hit, they were transitioning into sixth grade and those of us in and out of education know that that's a critical year, not only for learning about self-regulation, but learning about the social emotional skills and their kind of sense of self-efficacy and self-growth. So this was a major, and we all know this, the whole country knows this, this was a major loss for that particular cohort. Statistics show that if a student can delay their first use of a drug by even a year, they have much less of a chance of habitual use or addiction. So a lot of that sort of learning that they get from their peers was not always present, obviously due to the pandemic. This is not to say that Paquonic kids did this, but nationally, when we look at trends at this time, many students did self-medicate in order to self-regulate rather than turn to their peers to self-regulate. So that has been one of the obviously things we've seen this in both state, national and local statistics. What we're currently doing at the high school here is currently exploring a mental health first aid program. This is a nationally recognized program to empower students and staff to address mental health needs. There is also programs through the county that are free, which is called NJ4S. It's actually through the Division of Youth and Family Services. They provide online learning opportunities for parents as well as struggling students. This is something that I know our counseling staff and members of our CST are looking at as well. So this can This is something that I know our counseling staff and members of our CST are looking at as well. So this continues to be an area of focus for us specifically at the high school. The good news and where I can take a breath is that we continue, knock on wood, to have zero incidence of weapons possession or weapons use. Longitudinal data on confirmed HIBs, these are HIBs that were investigated and then were confirmed as HIBs. Again, you'll see the kind of the structure and the shape of the graph mimicking a lot of the previous ones. In PV, we attribute this to the HIV lessons going into the classrooms. Ms. Prashak, one of our counselors there, actually has been able to, because of the panther period, that time at the end of the day, she's been actually able to visit all the classes well before the midpoint in the year. And Mr. Sebrowski was telling me that this is something that she's never been able to do before with the previous schedule. So she's actually now able to continue to go into classes and do more of these lessons. And it's funny, when I was working at PV and and talking to Ms. Prashak and just kind of getting a little bit more information, it's funny, the kids there really do know what HIV is, what it means and what it does not mean, which is just as important. So I really, I really think that's been an important aspect of of this. At Hillview and other elementary schools, things like Harmony Week, there's a group called Lead You from the Society for the Improvement of Teen Suicide. They come by and do a couple of lessons. So again, this is not just a secondary thing. A lot of these programs are continuations at the elementary school from previous years. I think a particularly nice and positive statistic is the lower numbers of HIBs alleged. I'll just speak briefly off script for a moment. When I was a young administrator, I think this was maybe twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, and this law was relatively new. There was a lot of misuse and I think misapplication of these investigations and and this law, again, I was not in this district certainly, but in my personal experience elsewhere. And I think that this number here about the lower number of actually ones that are alleged is speaks well to our school culture, speaks well to the education efforts that are being done by our counseling staff. Numbers of removals, I think an important point for this is, again, just looking, this report that I'm presenting on is really just in the last six months. When we talk about removals, we're really only talking about a very small handful of kids. So even if the number seems rather high, obviously, you can't get into specifics here, but there are certain times where it's just a a small number of kids. For example, it's not twenty-four different kids or twenty-eight different kids. So sometimes I think when we look at data, it's important to remember that. The one area where we have, and this is the last slide, I promise, and I'm done here torturing everybody, but our last slide is about seclusion and restraints. This is a separate data entry for this report, has gone up. You'll see in certain areas, yes, and certain areas, no. Again, sometimes this is a handful of students, sometimes it's a couple of different students. When you have such a small number, and I myself came from a very small district and would often say this when I was presenting on data. When you see a graph like that, it looks like an enormous spike, but when you take the whole scope of a district, however, however many students we have. Elementarys, for example, if they have three hundred students, just one of those buildings, that's really a very low number. So I think when we put that in the context of the broader district, it's it's maybe not as great as that looks, but that's continues to be something that we do training on as administrators in terms of restraint training and things like that, people who work with with kids in this population. So I can attempt to answer some questions that you might have. If not, I promise to get the answer for you.
Can I? So I just want to speak to just some of my, obviously, I'm not a Paquonic educator, however, restraints have probably gone up because the law has changed a little bit in terms of the reporting as well as the requirements of staff to be trained in restraints as well as a lot of kids are not, a lot of students who may need to be restrained are usually going out in the past, have those students have gone out of district and now most districts are keeping them. So this is this is probably, I'm just kind of speaking to this. I don't want
Sure, yeah.
Just so everybody has a little bit more context to it. I did want to also thank you for this presentation. The visuals, the graphics are awesome. Very, very much appreciate it as well as your context that you provided. You clearly did a lot of background, you got a lot of background information before you presented it. Just real quick, for the Karen community, what did did this, did the administrators have any, or the elementary teachers have any specific parts of the curriculum from the Karen community that they thought they were working, or it's just in general?
I think because of the way it's structured, because it's not just a one off type thing, I think it's a very sort of embedded thing in the normal schedule. I didn't get any data on specific lessons, but I did get data on the actual structure. For example, at SJG, they've been really pushing the I statements, for example. So a lot of these things that are seemingly small, but they become embedded in the broader context of the day they cite, because as we know, once kids see something once, okay, they might forget it, but once they experience it again and again, it starts to become part of the norms of their interaction. So I think that was really the the feedback that I got about the program was it's easily embedded in the day to day.
Thank you.
Yeah. And one thing I can just speak to, and I'm glad you brought the point up and really happy that Mrs. Esposito pointed out too, with the seclusions and restraints is it does represent that we are making a concerted effort to keep students in district who otherwise might have might have had to go to a program elsewhere. And so that is part of why we're seeing a spike in numbers specifically at SJG. So ostensibly, it looks like it's a negative thing, but it's actually part to me of a larger positive where we're making sure that to the best of our abilities, we're keeping Paquonic students in Paquonic and providing the best programming that we can.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Gibbs, do you have a report?
Yes. Good evening. On tonight's board agenda, there is a resolution for the purchase and installation of the district wide access control deployment. The installation of the new access control system is in compliance with state guidelines. Our current system is outdated and has become more difficult to get replacement parts. The cost of the replacement is sixty-nine thousand, two hundred eighty-nine dollars and seven cents through the co op. The new system will help keep the district, Alyssa's law compliant. The installation of the new windows at the high school was completed on January third. A new shades for the windows are listed on tonight's board agenda for approval, and the cost of the new window shades is nineteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Dr. Portis and I met with the principals and department heads regarding their budgets, and we are on track with our budget calendar. According to the county office, we need to prepare for a flat state aid funding for next year. As of December thirty first, twenty twenty-four, our food service program has a year to date surplus of nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-six cents, which is up from last year's one thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-three cents. The new facility at Seven Industrial Road is in the quote process on the potential fit up of the building. I'm working with the architect and the owner of the building and obtaining the information needed in order to present to the board. More information will be provided at the February third workshop board meeting. We have received three Oprah requests since December of twenty twenty-four, two regarding past student information and one for the school insurance information. All requests were handled in compliance with state guidelines. And finally, this is just a reminder that if you haven't submitted your financial disclosure statement, to please do so as soon as possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gibbs. That brings us to our first opportunity for public comment. Members of the public may speak once for a maximum period of five minutes by the clock during this portion of the meeting. Public may speak on any agenda item only during this five minutes. And if a member of the public raises a question, please direct it to the board president, state your name and sign in before you begin. Okay, we're going to close public comment and move on to approval of the minutes. And I'm going to ask Mr. Cerisi to please move the minutes.
I would like to move the minutes from December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four and from January sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Any question or discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer took leave of absence. Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. Zakeo?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo is absent. Mrs. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Sannick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, up next is PMC, and I'd like Ms. Shenton to move the items from the PMC, less PMC one thirty-eight, twenty-five.
I would like to move PMC one twenty-six dash twenty-five through PMC one thirty-seven dash twenty-five and PMC one thirty-nine dash twenty-five through PMC one forty-eight dash.
Second.
Question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer took a leave. Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. Zakeo?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo is absent. Mrs. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Sannick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, up next is CIS. I'm going to ask Ms. Esposito to please move CIS.
I'd like to move CIS fifty dash twenty-five through CIS sixty dash twenty-five.
Second.
Any question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer took leave of absence. Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. Zakeo?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo is absent. Mrs. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Sannick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, up next, in the absence of Mr. Blumer, I'm going to ask Mr. Cerisi to please move the items under FFA.
I would like to move FFA one oh three dash twenty-five through FFA one eleven dash twenty-five.
Second.
Question or discussion?
I would like to acknowledge the donation for a child sized wheelchair from Mr. and Mrs. Tate.
Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer took leave of absence. Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. Zakeo?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo is absent. Mrs. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Sannick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up is policy, and Mr. McSweeney, would you please move the items under policy?
Yes, I'd like to move P eleven dash twenty-five and P twelve at twenty-five.
Second.
Question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer took leave of absence. Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. Zakeo?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo is absent. Mrs. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Sannick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that brings us to other. I'm going to ask Ms. Zakeo to please move the item under other.
I would like to move oh seven dash twenty-five.
Second.
Tim Gitten, second again. Question or discussion? He's not a roll. Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer took leave of absence. Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. Zakeo?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo is absent. Mrs. Shenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Sannick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that brings us to a separate second opportunity for public comment, and being that there's nobody here.
Margaret, you're somebody.
Margaret, would you like to make a public comment?
I'm concerned about Johnny.
Okay, so I'm going to move on to unfinished business. Any board member have any unfinished business? How about any new business? Board member announcements, maybe we can.
I have, I have two. So I attended the CPAC parent forum last week. It was, there was quite a few members there. It was some great discussion and some thoughts on some professional development or some, you know, forums they could bring going forward, possibly difference between accommodations and modifications and how to put that in, how to utilize that in an IEP. So it was really, it was well attended and really great to hear from the members. I also, as a parent, attended the college admissions panel. And for somebody who's worked in education for a long time, I've only worked in K to A district. So it was very interesting. I thought they did a great job, the guidance department, as well as the panel. For somebody who really knows nothing about the whole college, you know, process, I guess, it was, it was great. So thank you to the guidance department and Mr. Hazar for for bringing that to Paquonic and for the kids.
Anybody else? I just want to congratulate Henry Struble. I watched his speech, unbelievable, great honor. My kids have two of those bikes and really, really proud that a person from Paquonic was able to get that award. It's a big deal. So congratulations. Okay, we do not have reason to go into executive session, so we are going to adjourn. Our next meeting will be February third here at the high school. Everybody come on out. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All favor?
I think Timmy.
And you posed? All right, good night, everyone.